Yep, folks, welcome to our council meeting. I'd like to thank all of our broadcasting partners and the media that cover us. We appreciate their attendance. While you're in the gallery, we have a couple of things we have to do prior to the agenda. Counselor Kompodich asked for a moment to speak to the Ontario Nursing Association Conference, I think. Counselor Kompodich?
Thank you, Mayor Provenzano, and City Council, and staff, and viewers, and guests watching, for allowing me to say a couple of words about a recent convention that was held with the Ontario Nurses Association this past few weeks. The Provincial Nursing Conference was held the second week of June, and there was over 150 delegates who attended this convention, and over and above the regular agenda from the convention for a full day. All the delegates went to various locations in the Sioux and completed a number of projects, and we want to thank them very much for donating their time and their energy to assist worthy local organizations such as Arch, the Neighborhood Resource Center, and Batshuwan and Garden River First Nations. And I think it's important to note that their efforts have been much appreciated and will help ensure the conference held in the Sioux has left a lasting and a positive legacy in our city and the surrounding area. Nurses dedicate their lives to human care, and we want to thank them for doing so. So the Ontario Nurses Association supplied a video of the event, and if I could request Rob to be able to play the video.
I think Rob left his post there.
It's about a three-and-a-half-minute video on what they contributed to the municipality.
Thank you. We should reiterate your comments, Counselor. It was a tremendous conference, and the nurses certainly made a great contribution to our community when they were here, so we thank them for that. Counselor Mano, you had asked for a moment also, and then we're going to move on to the agenda, so if I could ask you to keep it to a moment, would be appreciated.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Provenzano. I had asked to speak very, very briefly to council today in the community. I wanted to introduce, perhaps, Josh, if you could just come up to the podium. Thank you. I wanted to welcome everyone and introduce you all to Josh Ingram. He is the newly hired manager for the Queenstown Association. He's actually still not technically started. His first day is on July 4th. Just briefly, I wanted to indicate he is a graduate of Algoma University College. He owns a local business known as Twin City Signs. He was the former creative director of 856 Limited here in the Sioux. And ever since hiring Josh, I've been in conversation with a lot of people who have worked with him and gotten to know him, and the common thread I always hear is that he's a very innovative thinker. So we at the Downtown or the Queenstown, sorry, Association are very excited to have him, and I think that's exactly what we need, is an innovative personality, and we're excited for opportunities moving forward. And I'm going to take this one last opportunity as well to say that his first event that he'll be jumping into is on July 14th, and that's the Downtown Street Party. And he's going to have about 10 days to get warmed up with that event before, of course, that starts out. So I just wanted to welcome Josh to the Queenstown Association and to the city.
Welcome to your new role, Josh, and good luck with it.
Thank you very much. All right. Sorry. Thank you. No, I look forward to working alongside the city closer in innovative ways, and we all know that Sioux State Marie is a great location, is a hub to the north, and that I plan to help in regards to anything I can in this upcoming year. Thank you very much. Please pop by on the 14th.
Great. Thank you, Josh. So, Mr. Clerk, if we can call the meeting to order then, please?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, under Agenda Item 1, adoption of minutes, a motion by councilors Romano and Butland, resolve that the minutes of the regular council meeting of 2016-0613 be approved.
All in favor? Carry.
Under Agenda Item 3, declarations of pecuniary interest.
Counselor Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Consent Item 6.8, Sioux College request. I'm currently on the board of Sioux College.
We're going to write that same one down for Counselor Shoemaker. Consider it declared, Counselor Shoemaker. Anything else, Counselor Christian?
That's it.
Any other conflicts, council? Seeing none, we can move on.
Under Agenda Item 4, approve agenda as presented. A motion by councilors Kompodich and Christian, resolve that the agenda for the 2016-0627 City Council Meeting and the addendum as presented be approved.
All in favor? Carry.
Under Agenda Item 5, delegations. We have one delegation tonight. That's the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. Shalom Omolo, Chair, is present.
So before you get going, Shalom, I just wanted to take a minute and ask you all just to introduce yourselves. You can go ahead and do that now.
Okay, yeah, so my name is Shalom, and I'm just finishing up Grade 12 at St. Mary's College. And this is Olivia. She's in finishing up Grade 11 at Superior Heights. Camille is finished her first year of nursing at Sioux College. Rob has finished his first year at Algoma U. And this is Emma, who's finished Grade 10 at Superior Heights. And missing here today is Ben Fisher, who's our Vice Chair, and Advika, who's our Secretary, as well as Nick Guido, Jenna Palombero, Grace Swain, and Andrew Knopick.
Great. So you can go ahead with your presentation, and I have a few comments I want to make after.
Okay, yeah. So we just wanted to come before council to let you know what we have done over the past year. So at the beginning of the year, the goals for the council were to develop the principles and guidelines for MIAC as it continues on, and as well as encourage community participation in youth events, to organize and support those events, and increase education and awareness of youth issues. So this year, brought the establishment of the youth fund, and we were able to give out that to a few different organizations over the year, which was really good to see. And then in February, we had an art gala here at the City Hall. It was a great success. We had about 200 people come, and about over 30 artists displayed their artwork and showcased their music. So that was a really, really good way to start off MIAC. And then this upcoming winter, we're looking to hold like a conference that will bring together youth in Sioux State Marie and help inspire them and engage them in the community. And this year, at our last meeting, we had Matt Keenan, or I don't, yeah, over at Cam Printing, design us a logo, which is up at the board there. So that will be our logo for the next few years. We really like that, like the people around in the circle of the logo, because it represents how we come together to help better the youth in Sioux State Marie. And other things, we'll be able to amend the terms of reference to better suit what we felt MIAC was. And next year, it's my wish as the council, takes more of an advising role within the community, so giving you guys advice if you have anything that you would like to know the youth perspective on, as well as other or outside organizations. And to conclude, I'd just like to thank Virginia, Mike, and Rick, who are our city liaison, our staff liaisons here at the city. I'd like to thank the council for all the work they have done, and the councilors as well, and you, Mr. Provenzano. And yeah, that's my presentation.
So this was the first year, as you're aware, and this group of youth was a tremendous group. I was really proud to be associated with them, but also what they accomplished, because when you're the group starting something, you got to kind of feel your way through it, and administratively, they did a great job with the terms of reference. But I think you're wrong, though. I don't think there was 200 people in City Hall. I would be shocked, because that night was a grand success, and I figure there was at least 300 to 400 people in City Hall. But, you know, when I walked into City Hall that night, they had the whole thing changed. They had students playing music, and they had student art, and they took the whole main floor and the whole third floor. And the city staff did a great job with it, but it was a really, probably one of the proudest moments of the first 16 months of being the mayor, was to come into City Hall and to see a couple hundred youth using City Hall and having a great event and raising a really significant sum of money for Arch. So you did a tremendous job this year. Really blessed to be working with you, and I look forward to the great things that your group will do next year and the years to come. So I'd like to just thank you for the great year that you had. Counselor Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I certainly want to join in that, and thank you all. I think it's incredible, it is incredibly encouraging to us, the City Council, to see the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council at work. I've heard a lot of good things about you. And there's youth who have been making some inquiries about what's happening in the city, and where can they plug in, and, you know, that nobody's listening to the youth, and we challenge that, and are very happy to have you, that we can direct those folks to, because I think that it comes down to communications, and you're being, you know, establishing yourselves, and you will become even better known, and that's our job here at this table, to make sure you're better known. And we just thank you. Thank you very, very much for what you've done.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments, council? So, thank you. And we have a meeting, I think, in July, where we're going to be talking about some things, so I look forward to seeing you then. Take care.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
So I think, Mr. Clerk, are we going to deal with the Sioux College matter before we get into consent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I've been requested to separate out Item 6.8 from consent. We can deal with it at this time. 6.8 is Sioux College Economic Diversification Fund Request. Funding options reported the Commissioner of Finance and Treasure is attached for the consideration of council. The motion going with the staff recommendation, a motion by councilors Romano and Butland, as Counselor Christian has pecuniary interest, resolve that the report to the Commissioner of Finance and Treasure concerning funding options for the Sioux College Economic Diversification Fund request of $1 million be received and that a financial contribution not be approved at this time. That is the initial motion before you. There is another motion that has been put forth by councilors Myers and Hollingsworth that is on your desk. Should the staff, the motion with the staff recommendation fail, then you would proceed to consider that motion.
So we'll deal with the staff recommendation first, and then if that fails, we'll deal with Counselor Myers' motion. Counselor Mano, you raising your hands. You recognize your own that is a courtesy mover. You'd like to be removed in any event?
Yes, I don't mind being a courtesy seconder, but not a courtesy mover. I think that would impact how I can potentially vote on the matter, so.
No, you could vote against the matter.
Oh, as a courtesy, okay.
Yeah, so just by mechanics, you've embedded as a courtesy, but you can vote against it. It doesn't prohibit that. Okay, so do we have any questions for staff on the staff report? Is there any debate on the staff report? Or would you like to just vote on the staff report and then move to Counselor Myers' motion? So you've read the motion that's in front of council?
Yes.
So we're going to vote on the staff report? All in favor of the staff report? So, in favor of the staff report? Okay, opposed? Okay, so that motion fails, so we're going to deal with Counselor Myers' motion. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Counselor Myers' motion? I have a copy of it here.
This is a motion by councilors Myers and Hollingsworth. Whereas the city of Sioux State Marie has established a City Economic Diversification Fund, EDF, to support job creation, support the increase of new tax assessment through new investments, and to support economic development projects, and whereas City Council annually establishes $500,000 in funding support for the EDF, and whereas this fund is limited, the City Council must be very selective in how the funds are dispersed to ensure that the maximum return on investment is achieved, and whereas key performance targets have been established for evaluating the use of the EDF, which include, one, net job creation, two, increased tax assessment, and three, projects that are consistent with Sioux State Marie economic development priorities as listed on the Sioux State Marie Economic Development Corporation website, and whereas Sioux College has made a request to City Council to invest $101 million in the development of its $18.6 million Institute for Environmental Education and Entrepreneurship facility, and whereas staff has advised City Council that a $1 million contribution by the city to Sioux College will significantly strain the city's finances, and whereas several millions of dollars have been secured from other levels of government, and whereas this project does meet all of the above-listed key performance targets, noting that this project comes under the economic priority category post-secondary, therefore be it resolved that City Council does provide $400,000 in support of this project using the uncommitted balance of funds in the EDF, $220,000, and an allotment of $180,000 from the 2017 allocation.
Counselor Myers, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Dr. Kamen, I do apologize that I didn't have the opportunity to get to you today to speak to you about this, and I did give it to you just before the beginning of this meeting, so it's not the way I usually like to do things, but I had a family crisis that went on throughout the entire day, so I couldn't get to you earlier, and I do apologize for that. And I respect the fact that I should have done that and got it to you sooner. However, thank you, and thank you to my wardmate, Counselor Hollingsworth, for seconding this. I think that I would probably be fairly confident in saying that every single one of us want to support Sioux College, and as well as Algoma University, our post-secondary institutions are very well identified as economic pillars in our community. This ask that's before us, of course, has come at a time that I don't need to go into and describe that our community is acutely aware of, and I certainly thank our staff for being very prudent and wise in their counsel to us. I don't see at all how we could entertain a $1 million investment at this time. As worthy as we may think it is or is not, the reality is, we do not have that kind of money. So, and yeah, I think it's critically important that we do support Sioux College and demonstrate that in a fashion that at least will show that is the heart of council. So I do ask that council would support this, and I didn't want to go beyond 2017. I feel that the half a million dollars that will be in our 2018 EDF needs to be there and ready for other projects, and who knows where they're going to come from? So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Counselor Myers. Counselor Butland?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I have to admit, I was, as you know, I was very much in favor of this. At the last council meeting, it was intended to go to 2018 and raise the level to 900,000, but it's almost unseemly to say, well, you've put 400, and I want to go to nine. It doesn't seem the right thing to do. So I've backed off on that, and I'm hoping that Sioux College will be accepting and pleased with the Myers-Hollingsworth resolution. But I think it's important that we tell the community why, other than just, well, we need to support Sioux College, and we've given that academic speech in the past. If there's a future for a community that is struggling, it is often found in academic institutions right across North America. But doing a little bit of background research, I found out it's not just Sioux College and Algoma University in Sioux State Marie that's suffering. A reduction of high school students enrolling, they're just not there anymore, so everybody is hurting. And some of the ones that you hear, Windsor, Guelph, less 350 students. That's a big hit at any place, but some cities, you say, well, Guelph is recession-proof, but no. North Bay, 50 people last year, non-academic staff were laid off. This year, 22 teaching professors, I think mainly in education, will probably be released. So Laurentian, Wilfred Delory, a $4.7 million deficit. So it's all over, and you say, what's happening? Well, again, there are not the students taking up the placements, so why give some money to Sioux College in support thereof? Because I think in order to increase the enrollment, you have to offer programs that are attractive to people outside of the community to come to Sioux State Marie. And this plan has been evolving for the last three years, and it's something, it's sustainability, it's environment, it fits right into the future as opposed to, well, we have to react rather quickly. So I think we absolutely have to support Sioux College in this, and I did talk to Algoma University, and they're coming forward with something as well, but some people said, well, you know, if we have to give a million here, we have to do a million there. Let's wait to see what Algoma has in mind. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
So we have Counselor Mano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to make a couple of comments with respect to this. I support the resolution of councilors Myers and Hollingsworth. I would like to bring about a friendly amendment to it, though. Just some food for thought to everyone, we know that we have, according to what we have as information this weekend last, $220,000 for this year, $180,000 for next, and then $500,000 for 2018. My thoughts are to commit 110, leaving $110,000 for 2016. Take 90,000 of the 2017 balance, leaving us with 90,000 for 2017, and taking half of the 2018 balance, leaving 250,000 for 2018, and bringing us to a total investment of The reason why I support this is firstly, with respect to the breakdown that I've suggested, and I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, in terms of how we address that issue as to a friendly amendment, but I'll just make a few brief comments with respect to that. I simply don't want to be in a position where we have nothing left for the next two years in our EDF fund. We've had requests come before us in the $70,000 to $90,000 before. I'd like to see something left in there in the event of a rainy day. We don't know what might come. We don't know what need might be there. I would rather not see us deplete two years' worth of the fund. I'd like to see something left in there. I can appreciate not wanting to leverage 2018 to such a significant extent. However, I think this is a positive investment for us to make. The reasons that we've heard, I won't repeat. I will say my own reason. I cited this at the last meeting, and I will say it again. We've been told that if Sioux College goes ahead with this program, we're talking about 100 foreign students over the first three years after the building goes up. Statistics show, and it's pretty obvious information, for every student that comes to your community, they invest $30,000 per year into your community. You do the math, that's a $3 million return on investment over three years. So when we look at our fundamental challenge that we face currently, and a lot of other communities are suffering the same problem, it's an aging demographic. What better than to invest into something that's going to bring youth into our community? And perhaps, if we could find a way to retain some of those youth, we go a long way to improving our demographics issues in this community. So from my perspective, it makes sense to invest into something that is going to be a substantial, that provides a substantial return on investment for us, and invest into our education sector, and invest in bringing more youth to this community.
Counselor Mano, I think, I'll let the clerk correct me, but I think that's too substantive to be considered friendly. So you would need a seconder for that amendment. So if there's no seconder for it, then we're just going to proceed on the main motion. So do we have a seconder for that amendment? Seeing none, the motion will proceed as it was originally structured. Do you have any other comments to add to? No, my comments, I think, apply to the resolution as it is as well. Good. So we have Counselor Hollingsworth, and then Counselor Bruni.
Thank you. I just want to make a few comments, brief comments. Of course, I do support the resolution since I am a seconder. I just want to emphasize that, yes, it's important to support our educational institutions such as Sioux College and also Algoma University, and as Counsel Butman said, we may, who knows, down the road, Algoma University may come to us with requests. I also want to emphasize that it's important that when we decide to, if we do decide to support Sioux College or any other initiatives, that we never constrain ourselves financially. Very important. The other piece I would like to emphasize is, yes, we are in economic challenges right now, and we are trying to look at the bigger picture, and helping Sioux College and helping hopefully other institutions like Algoma University maybe in the future. It will help build our future. But I do want to emphasize this one more time very loudly. As we build a community plan, I trust that as council and the community plan will eventually get to the point that we list our priorities in investing. I'm not saying from micro to give exactly set examples, but I think it's important as we move forward in building the community plan that we have overarching, general, common statements that we will support in the future. Because since I've been on council, I feel sometimes we are now being asked to support all sorts of different initiatives, and we are starting to open up our wallets and giving money here and there. And if we continue to do that, that's going to create, I think, uncertainty in the future financially, and most of all, we have to be very focused on where our investment's going so that we get the best return of our investments. So I look forward to hearing more about the community plan, an update maybe potentially at our next council meeting, and to really focus on creating priorities, just like any other corporation does, so that we know where our money's going to be best spent and give us the best return. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bruni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I won't support this resolution, and for my reasons, I believe in the past, we have been very supportive to our educational facilities that we have here in the Sioux, Sioux College, Algoma University. I believe it's not the proper decision by eliminating our EDF fund completely for the next two years. I believe we're, basically, we're, once that EDF fund is completed, what's next? It's not the right time. Our biggest employer in our city owes close to $20 million. I think we have to get all our eggs in one basket and move forward. To make this decision now, I think Sioux College will continue with this project, and that's a plus for Sioux College, but to eliminate our EDF fund completely, I don't think it's the right move at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Bruni. Any other comments on this? Counselor? Counselor Fatah?
Mr. Mayor, I'll try and keep this brief.
That'd be great.
It's interesting that the EDC has been very supportive of most of these projects that are brought to our attention. They supported the $250,000 a year over three years, which obviously took a large hit on the EDF fund. Now we're being asked to fund $1 million for Sioux College.
$400,000. This motion's for $400,000?
No, well, yeah, okay. Initially, the initial request--
We're talking about this motion.
Yeah, but the request was for a million.
It was.
We changed the figure to four. The figure was a million dollars.
Sure, but the motion before you is--
But my point, it has to do with the $1 million. The Sioux College came to us for a million dollars, the EDC supported that request.
Okay.
All that with the understanding that they don't want us to touch the EDF fund. That's the point that I'm trying to make--
That's ultimately where you're going.
That's where I'm going on this. You know, this is a good investment for Sioux St. Marie. It is. But we seem to, we seem to, we seem to be too generous, and this is my problem here, we seem to be too generous, and this notion about keeping money for a rainy day, well, we haven't done that. We've spent $250,000 per year over three years, and we're not even sure if that money's money well-spent. This is a good investment, we know it is. But now we're being asked to either borrow or take what's left of the EDF.
Counselor Fatah, the motion is to take it out of the EDF?
I understand that.
Okay.
But my point that I'm trying to make here is that we seem to think we can respond to all requests, that, and the point that I'm emphasizing is that request from the Innovation Centre, which hangs over our heads like a black cloud. If we, so I cannot vote in favor of this for the simple reason that this council has been too generous in the past with the EDF funds, with the recommendation of the EDC. Where does the money come from, Mr. Mayor?
It comes from the budget. We budget a half a million dollars a year.
No, it's coming from the taxpayers.
Yeah, but this isn't, this isn't going to increase the levy, it's from the EDF.
You know, timing is lousy on this, obviously. We all know that.
Okay, so we understand your position, you've expressed it already, you're not going to vote for the motion.
But unfortunately, I'm not, but because of the history that I just tried to make reference to.
Understand. Anybody else on this motion? So before we call for a vote, just to be clear, I support the motion. The, I think it's a reasonable amount of money when you look at our comparators. I think Thunder Bay participated to this similar degree to $500,000, the project in their community. It's a challenging time, but this is what the EDF is for. I think it's a good project. I do believe that the college is important to the future of our community, and I think it's a reasonable allocation over two years. And I wish the college the best of efforts, best of luck with this project, and I hope the motion passes. Sure.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, a recorded vote has been requested. Counselor Butland?
For.
Counselor Myers?
For.
Counselor Bruni?
Against.
Counselor Nero?
For.
Counselor Romano?
For.
Counselor Hollingsworth?
For.
Counselor Hoopinen?
For.
Counselor Krampodich?
For.
Counselor Fatah?
Dedebly against.
Counselor Turco?
For.
Mayor Provenzano?
For.
Motion is carried.
Motion's carried. Okay, thank you. So we'll move to the consent agenda. So we'll start with Counselor Fatah.
I just wanted to, I had my hand up for one specific reason. I wanted to pull 6.11, please, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, 6.11 will be pulled from the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, any matters on consent? Counselor Butland?
Yeah, 6.17.
And I don't know, I have some comments to make, and I've talked to Solicitor Seven today. I don't know if I want to pull. I don't have a resolution, per se, but--
So do we need to pull it? Can't you make the comments and consent?
Yes, we can. I wait your guy.
Do you want to start? Why don't we take care of that one now?
It's up to you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor Butland.
Thank you for that. Local application of buy-Canadian policy. As you know, I've been saying, we should be talking more about steel, and we haven't talked about it a lot. I'm sure Counselor Krampodich talks about it each and every day, and it must be difficult. I think we all appreciate that. When I first put this on, I said, this is a flight of fancy. I won't be able to get a seconder for this buy-Canadian policy. And the staff report came back and probably confirmed that or reinforced that, yeah, I think council's going to have a hard time with this. I'll come to that. There were developments today that occurred that I'm quite happy about. The lie of the land is, and also documentation came before you this evening, so next council meeting, hopefully, you'll read it and what will come to your possession in the interim. The lie of the land, we have issues with China and the United States, primarily two countries with regards to the steel industry. And China is way over capacity, and they accept that. They say, we need to close a whole host of steel plants in China. And if they did that, that would put 500,000 steelworkers out of jobs. And they closed a couple of plants, one of them 6,000 people. When they did it, they were very fearful of social unrest. Immediately, there was major uproar in this particular city, and steelworkers were getting on the top of the building and said, if you don't reopen this, we're going to jump to our death because these jobs are our future. So what did China do? They relented and said, okay, we're going to reopen this polluting plant. And even though the policy is to reduce 500,000 steelworkers, basically, they have reduced none. And what was the reaction? The United States said, okay, we'll levy a tariff of 520%. 520%. So you can bet there'll not be a lot of Chinese steel being sold into the United States. Now, it comes to the United States, and you can check with S.R., and they will tell you. It's nigh on impossible to sell steel of Canadian origin into the United States. The national government said, if you want to be eligible for infrastructure monies, you have to make sure that it's 60, 70, 90, or 100% American content. And I've got the state-by-state rundown saying each state is moving forward on its own. The most recent, they said, okay, we're going to levy another 25% on softwood lumber. So I don't want to make this too parochial. It's not just about steel. Ontario has lost 300,000 manufacturing jobs in the last five years. Not just to being closed out of the American market, there are other reasons why, but this is a part of it. So we talk about free trade. It's not free trade. They have access to our market, we don't have access to their market. MP Sheehan, I think, has been doing good work in Ottawa and has brought together the steel executives from the steel mills in Canada, and they're saying, okay, we're going to address our archaic trade laws. But that will take, my guess is, a year. And they'll come out with, okay, we're going to impose 9% tariff. The Americans go out, 500%. So we'll get there, but it'll be slow, expensive, and maybe a little bit late in the game. When I talked to people some, a couple of months ago, they said, yes, we support this, Mr. Butland, but nuance it. Don't commit it with, you know, too aggressive because the Americans will retaliate. And as the Canadian manufacturers and exporters said today, they can't retaliate any more than they already have. There's nothing left for them to do to us. So it's not just the Buy American Act, state-by-state, or repeat anything. And will Canadians, will we buy Canadian? And maybe it's not a good analogy or comparison, but if you follow the French and Heinz ketchup deal, French's ketchup went from 2 million units to 18 million units in a short period of time because people said, they're buying Canadian, or they're using Canadian Leamington tomatoes, I'm prepared to buy that ketchup even if it costs me more. Billy Bee honey said, made in Canada. They uncovered that their honey was coming from China or Argentina. So they've had to relent and say, hmm, we're going to have to buy. So Canadians, given the opportunity, will buy Canadian. The Canadian manufacturers and exporters of Canada say, yes. And what just came out today was the cities of Hamilton, Kingston, and Halton Hills have adopted a similar policy. Now, to, I guess, take what I was told, by the way, the councillor in Halton Hills, it happens to be the president of FCM, and he was pushing this strongly. I'll read you one paragraph of a letter from CME, and then that's all I need to say, Mr. Mayor. "Adopting a policy of trade reciprocity in municipal procurement would give local governments a great opportunity to fix the blatant unfairness created by rising buy-American measures imposed on Canadian manufacturers and exporters, and thereby forcing delocalization of jobs and industrial activities south of the border. As you know, buy-American policies oblige all U.S. state and municipal governments to impose strict domestic content requirements for all iron and steel products used for infrastructure projects funded by the federal government." So rather than saying you have to buy Canadian, they're suggesting reciprocity agreement so that if you're not allowed to sell into their market, you can't sell into our market. So it's, I guess, it's in the wording, Mr. Mayor. So I'll have a resolution next time before council endorsing this, and hopefully, it won't be just four cities in Ontario. We'll bring it to AMO and see if they can endorse it and gather some steam, and rather than a buy-Canadian, there'll be a reciprocity agreement that will protect our manufacturers, particularly our situation, the steel mills in Sioux, the steel mill in Sioux St. Marie. Thanks for your patience.
Anybody on 6.17? Seeing none, we have Counselor Turco, you're next. What matter did you want to speak to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just one, actually.
Okay, go ahead.
And I can confirm, Mr. Butland, about the French's story. I experienced it last week at one of my meetings. I said, where's Heinz? They say, we don't use Heinz anymore. At a very popular hotel in Southern Ontario, so it's true. The 616 for Mr. Don Elliott, the environmental assessment McNab in St. George's.
Okay.
This is, we've discussed, we've had meetings on this issue, Don, over the last year or two, and that, so we're talking about, can you explain a little bit to our viewing public and members of councils here? This is the area around St. Basil School, St. George's Avenue, correct? Tell us a little more about that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Turco, yeah, it's an accident, the accident counts have been increasing over the last few years, and we have a lot of anecdotes from the residents in the area that there are many occurrences or incidents that aren't reported. So we think it's an intersection that we can probably do some improvements to. So it's been looked at by a consultant, Public Works Traffic Division retained a consultant to look at it, and we're at the point now where we, to do this properly, we need to go through what's called a Schedule B environmental assessment. There'd be an open house, and we'll determine what the best solution is in that, in that manner.
So as a follow-up to that, Mr. Mayor, what's hoped to come after this? Some recommendations or going forward?
Yes, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Turco, there will very likely be some recommendations for capital improvements that will improve safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Turco. Anybody else in 6.16? No, Counselor Christian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question through you to Mr. Elliott, 6.14. Mr. Elliott, under this report, the connecting link, widening of Black Road, we may have discussed this in the past, but for the sake of the viewing audience and perhaps council as well, what was the reason given for the connecting link application being turned down? The provincial government said, no, this time around.
Mr. Mayor to Counselor Christian, the reason is twofold. There's a question of eligibility of whether the widening is something that the city needs or the province needs, so we're in discussions with the province about who really has the rights to the capacity of the road. The other thing for the ministry, the first, the first answer they gave me, the road is fine right now from a surface standpoint, and because they resurfaced, pardon me, because they canceled the connecting link program province-wide for the better part of three years, they have other priorities within the province that are much worse shape than a widening. So they're looking after a couple of bridges and some roads that have very poor surfaces. So that's, that's part of the reason as well.
Yeah, I'm glad you explained it that way because it struck me that, you know, we've got a widening up on Second Line, but then this part of that bypass, you know, doesn't qualify. But as you pointed out, it sounds like there's a backlog and it simply just doesn't fit into their priorities at this point.
That's correct. And also, Counselor Christian, as the report says, it's certainly eligible under the OCIF funding program, so that may be where we apply for $2 million.
And that was going to be my follow-up question. What are the criterias for that fund that make this eligible? Or perhaps, or could be eligible?
Mr. Mayor to Counselor Christian, we know it's eligible because that's the funding program that we got, 2 million for each of the two widening, the second and third phases of the widening of Second Line. So there's no doubt in my mind that it's eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, anybody else in 6.14? In 6.14? Go ahead.
I think I asked you this earlier, Don, regarding the, the extension of Sackville Road to Third Line. I think what I asked you was, is there, is there any, are there any plans to have a road leading into the industrial park at this time? Is that part of the plan?
Mr. Mayor to Counselor Fatah, the extension of Sackville is a result of an environmental assessment that was completed two or three years ago, and it's now, it's in the queue in our capital works program. So the intention is, in 2017, to extend it to Third Line. The possibility of a secondary connection to the industrial park, it was considered as, on its own, as a, as a potential. Instead of going all the way to Third Line, there was an alternative that just went into the park, the industrial park. But the extension to Third Line was the preferred alternative. There's certainly a possibility in the future to conduct another environmental assessment to see if there's a, a need to construct a road from Sackville to connect to industrial park. So to answer your question, no, there's no connection to the industrial park under this project.
Can you give me a sort of a ballpark figure, what you may be looking at, if you actually included that as part of your construction project? I mean, is it sizable? Is it a sizable figure?
It's a sizable, it's nowhere near the cost of the Sackville Road extension, but it would be a sizable project. And as I said, we would have to do an environmental assessment. For a new road, you have to conduct a class environmental assessment, so we'd do that first.
Just as a final point, as a, as a, just my observation, but if that road did at some early, some early point, whether it's now or down the road, I can see two huge positives for having that road into the industrial park. And one, of course, would be a lot more traffic would use it because a lot of them aren't going all the way to Third Line, so people that aren't going all the way to Third Line might continue using the current route. So a lot of those people that are going to places like Home Depot, you know, Walmart even, they would rather go that route than go up to that intersection of Second Line, Great Northern Road. Great Northern Road. So the traffic, there'd be even more traffic utilization, I believe. And another point that I think is worth mentioning, I think, is that I think it would affect the values of those properties in the industrial park. So if the values are affected and the demand is affected, you might see some of those properties selling and then, of course, probably developing. So all that being said, I think it's something that's certainly worth considering in the short term, in my opinion.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Bruny on the same matter?
Yes, to Mr. Elliott, regarding the extension of Sackville Road, will the residents be able to attend an open house? Or would it be, how would the information be transferred to the residents in that area?
Mr. Mayor to councillor Bruny, there have been open houses for the Sackville extension up to now. We do have a contact list. And this would fall under the same category as all the other Capital Works construction projects. All the people in the neighborhood would be given notices of construction and contact names for people if there are, people who can help them if there's a problem during construction.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no one else on 6.14? Any other matters in the consent agenda? Go ahead councillor Hollingsworth.
I believe 6.15, which is the downtown development initiative evaluation next steps.
Go ahead.
Okay. I do have a question, but first I just want to comment that I thought the report was well done. And for the viewers at home, I thought the information you provided us to where you stated downtown occupies 1% of the city's overall, but contributes about 9% of the city's overall tax revenue 2013 was very useful for me. And also, I thought it was very informative that the downtown represents approximately 23% of the municipality's commercial tax revenue. So I want to emphasize that, of course, we all know that downtown is very important. I also, before I get to my question, want to say I appreciate the private groups that have invested their own money into our downtown area, such as, we know that we have a new apartment building that recently opened, kitty-corned to the public library. We also know that we're getting closer to the Rivers Walk development being completed. These are some examples where we're bringing people back downtown, creating density. So again, I want to say that's great that we have private investors. Also, I want to say again, thank you to all those family businesses that continue to be loyal to the downtown, such as Savoy's, the fashion shop at Gabriel's, and most of all to the new ones that have just recently opened up, a couple of microbreweries, Montley's, and so forth. So therefore, my question is this, and I'm not sure if we can answer this, or I may have to go to our new downtown association manager. But here's my question. How can we, in the future, potentially be more selective of who can open up a business downtown? For example, I do receive a lot of comments from families, and they are concerned about the meth labs, and I need to bring this up.
Councillor Hollingsworth, there are no meth labs downtown.
Or the clinics, I should say. I apologize.
Yeah, we have to be very clear about, whoa. Like that, so it's...
You don't know about that one, do you?
Yeah, but that's a matter, that's a matter for like the zoning bylaw, right? So it's, you're talking about what uses are permitted. So that's what you really want to be looking at, is what uses are permitted in accord with the zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you. So that is what I need, like to focus on, that particular question. Because it is concerning to a lot of our families that want to spend more time downtown. So I'm not sure who'd direct that to.
It would be Mr. McConnell.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To councillor Hollingsworth, I think the mayor's answer to the question was just spot-on. The city doesn't control who can and who can't open a business downtown, other than through the zoning bylaw. So where we have a property that is owned commercial, basically any commercial business could open in there, whether it be a bank, a fashion, you know, a clothing store, or an art gallery, or a dentist's office, or a doctor's office, or a meth clinic. And for us to go in and start picking and choosing would be difficult. If council wishes, the way to deal with that would be to ask for a report to basically prohibit meth clinics from a particular area of town. I don't know how successful that would be, but that would be the only way that we can control who moves into an area. I'm not saying I recommend that, but that would be the only way to go about that control because the zoning bylaw is really the only, the only method that the city has of controlling who moves in where.
Councillor Myers on the same topic?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that where councillor Hollingsworth is probably going, and I totally concur, and I respect what you've just said, Mr. Planning Director, however, I do think that what I'd like to know is, maybe it's a question for our solicitor, is whether legally, as a city council, we can decide to determine what activity we want in our downtown area. We've spent a lot of time at this table talking about downtown investment and so on and so forth, and trying to create a certain type of a community that's people-friendly and so on and so forth. And there's a lot that goes with that. And certainly the methadone clinics, the second one which just opened recently is one example. But there's even, there's other types of activities, even have our large banks and so on, and others that are perhaps not opened in a retail sense, that can participate in things like our street party that we're gonna have on the 14th of July and so on. So I'd like to know legally what powers we have at this table to really aggressively determine what we want to happen in our downtown, apart from what Mr. McConnell just said. So through you, Mr. Mayor, I think I'd ask our solicitor.
Mr. McConnell? Well, sorry, I apologize. Ms. Moore with 7.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Myers. The city is able to deal with matters through way of use, of, we can zone uses. That's what we're able to do under our zoning bylaw. We have to be very careful in terms of other restrictions and how we might limit activities because there is case law that talks directly on that point. You cannot restrict, it deals with issues of discrimination and human rights, and there's certainly case law in there. There's a wide variety of cases that talk about that. So we have to be very careful that we restrict ourselves to what we're legally permitted to do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, solicitor. I guess, I think it's because we always, being a border community, we always hear about the communities south of the border. We have beautiful communities down in Michigan that we're often in, apart from buying Canadian, councillor. And, I mean, we look at these and people compare us to these communities. And you think, well, the Harbor Springs, or Uptoski, or, you know, even our friends in St. Michigan. And they seem to be able to create these wonderful people-type downtowns, and they have their façades and everything looking right. So I think, I suspect, we have not discussed this, but I suspect that's where my wordmates going here. And I totally concur that, but I wanted to know first, what are we legally able to do? Because part of this equation is, I think, possibly, say, the state of Michigan, they have a different set of perimeters than what we do here. And I think that's one of our challenges, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't try to tackle it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know the downtown's near and dear to your heart, too, so thank you.
Yeah, I was pleased by the report, Mr. McConnell. I wanted to commend you and Steve and Peter and Tori. I know you're doing a lot of good work. I think it's really positive that you want to do a broader community consultation and get some feedback as to what people would like to see. But I'm glad that we're looking at things, and the report puts a lot of issues on the table, two-waying Queen Street and doing a bunch of other things. And I think at due time, we talked about all of the different opportunities we have and have a good, hard look at them. So I just, I want to acknowledge for the community that there are a number of really good people here in City Hall that are working hard on this, and you've made some good accomplishments to date. But I think there's a bright future there, and I'm confident in the work that you're doing. So I just wanted to thank you for it. Councillor Mano?
Thank you, and I'll be extremely brief on this. I just want to say with respect to the last few comments about the meth lab, I think we can't forget for...
Clinic, clinic, councillor Mano.
Clinic, meth lab clinic, you know, yes, no, I recognize clinic, sorry. These are people who are trying to rehabilitate themselves, are trying to help themselves out. Let's not be lost, let's not let that be lost on us. Secondly, I think it should be noted that I have now been the chair of the downtown or the Queenstown Association for a little over seven, eight months now. And I've heard this concern come about once. Once of people hanging around the meth clinic and what can be done. I have never really heard any extensive complaints. The concerns about the majority of the merchants and the people downtown are centering around other issues I won't get into now, they're raised in the report. But I just, before we jump on a bandwagon with respect to the meth clinic, let's bear in mind and be a little bit cautious about what we're talking about here. And let's not forget to be a little bit open-minded about what that clinic is there for. I will say that one thing that has been considered a great deal through our association, and I've even had discussions with Don, sorry, Mr. McConnell, about this in the past, I think the downtown task force is a great idea, and I'm excited to get that started. And I hope I can in some way help and contribute with respect to that. I think that's something we need to do and get everybody on board together before we look at, I should say, all the key stakeholders downtown involved and on board before we move forward with any other plans for downtown.
I think this is the first step to do that, councillor Mano. I commend the planning department. Anybody else in the downtown report? You've spoken to this already councillor Hollingsworth, did you have something new you wanted to say? Well, I don't want to argue the point about methadone clinics, that'll be for another day. I mean, if, when there's something before us to actually decide. Councillor Fatta?
One brief point.
Well, you haven't spoken to this matter, so we'll give you that opportunity.
Mr. McConnell, just so that you can refresh our memories, people have brought this up to me, I just want you to maybe give me a sort of a, the Kohl's version response, but there's been that correlation between replacing trees on Queen Street and a $2 million price tag. Can you touch on that and just, just to sort of shed some light on this matter for me, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Fatta. We had done a report earlier for council that set out the cost of replacing the trees on Queen Street, of which there are a lot. If we were to go ahead and replace the trees, I don't remember the exact number, in order to get to the $2 million number, that included lights and other streetscape furnishings improvements. Just to replace the tree, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact number, was considerably less. But that was not approved in the last budget, so that will not be going ahead this summer.
Okay, thank you. There was no intention or plan to spend millions of dollars to replace the trees. It was a whole streetscaping thing, but that was glossed over by a number of people, councillor Fatta, including maybe apparently yourself. So anybody else on that matter? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go to the planning part of the agenda. Councillor Bruny, I'm gonna need you to take the chair because I have a conflict on the planning part. Mr. Clark?
Mr. Mayor, I believe your conflict is, the applicant is a client of your law firm.
Just to be clear, on the planning, the applicant in the planning matter, my law firm's done work for the applicant. Not on this matter, but in other matters.
Council, you have one planning application this evening, 992 Old Gully Bay Road. Motion by councillors Compaugh, Och and Christian, resolve that the report of the planner concerning application 8916T Old Gully Bay Road be received and that the application to rezone the subject property from rural aggregate extraction zone to rural aggregate extraction zone with a special exception to permit the display of a prefabricated home for a period not to exceed three years be approved, and that the legal department be directed to prepare the necessary bylaw to effect this approval.
Don, would you like to expand?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. This property is on the east side of Old Gully Bay Road, just a little bit north of Fifth Line. The request before council tonight is for approval of a three-year temporary use permit that would allow the display of a, it's a display home, a model home of a prefabricated home. It's actually described in the report in a little more detail than just prefabricated. It includes built-in solar panels and a rainwater collection system in the rooftop. It is an interesting, it's actually very advanced technology. And the applicant is, wishes to locate the house there simply to see if we can build the business a little bit more. Mr. Cormier is in the audience tonight, if there are any questions.
Any, any questions from councillors?
Go ahead. Go ahead councillor Butler. You don't, you don't need a mic.
No? Okay, thank you. I'll speak loudly.
I know you.
Yeah, I spoke to Mr. Cormier earlier today and said, I think this is a good development. And I did learn a fair amount from him, saying that these homes, built by his company, are in Egypt and I think other international locations. And so I asked, do you have any plans to perhaps, you know, they're talking about cottages, but this is the kind of thing, a sustainable home, any thought of having an urban setting for this kind of home? And he said, well, that might be the ultimate goal. I hope I'm not speaking out of turn. So congratulations, this is great. And I will tell Mr. McConnell to tell Mr. Tonazzo that the green energy capital of the world is even more grandiose than I thought. We were declared the alternative energy capital of North America. So I didn't know we had expanded to the world. But after Mr. Cormier's development, maybe we'll go there. Thanks, Lucille.
Thank you. I forgot to mention, is there anybody here that wants to speak against the motion? And obviously, there's not, but to make sure that we do ask, is there anybody else? Any comments from anybody? All in favor? Opposed, carried? Thank you.
Mr. Acting Member and Mayor and members of council, we can now proceed with the rest of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any particular order here for councillors, so if you want to put your hand All in favor of the agenda presented in front of you? Or consent items?
I can...
Oh, you want to? Go ahead.
I'll just speak to the motion.
Sorry. I just wanted to speed it up for you.
Motion by councillors Compaugh, Och and Christian, resolve that all items listed under date 2016-06-27 Part 1 Consent Agenda and the addendum be approved as recommended, save and accept 6.8 and 6.11.
All in favor? Opposed, carried? Go ahead.
Strategy Mayor, members of council, we can proceed with item 6.11 RFP feasibility study, integration of transit operations at the PWT site. There is a motion by councillors Compaugh, Och and Butler, resolve that the report of the manager of purchasing concerning RFP feasibility study, integration of transit operations at PWT site be received, and that the proposal submitted by Tolic Engineering be approved.
Thank you. Would any staff would like to speak on this first, Commissioner Girardi, or no? No?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Acting Mayor to council. For clarification, this feasibility study, there was funding set aside in the 2016 budget. There was, I think, approximately $250,000 set aside to do this feasibility study, to look at the possibilities of, first of all, the synergies between Public Works and transit, or transit as a standalone, or just leaving the whole transit situation the way it is. So, but again, when you start looking at this process, it can be quite an in-depth process. There are several studies that have to be done. This falls under a Class C environmental assessment, so there's two public consultations that'll happen. There's traffic studies, biological studies, there's social studies, noise studies, air studies, so it's quite intense. It isn't something, I'm sure there's those of you who are questioning the amount of money, the cost of this, but there are several studies that have to be done to get to a, to have us prepared for funding, just in case there's funding coming up in the future. So that's why we're doing this, that's why we initiated this. And again, it's with hopes to have the opportunity to get some funding for this in 2017, 2018.
Thank you, Commissioner Girardi. Any questions from councillor Butler?
Yes, first of all, I'm happy that a local firm out of the five that put a bid in was successful. But I did say when I read this on the weekend, I said, well, that's perhaps the most expensive study I've seen in ages. So I asked Mr. Girardi, and he explained it, I think. Could we not, because your last statement was, we'll have the study done in case there money's available. Can we do a, or, probably not fair.
are monies available, can we do a, or, probably not fair, could we do a phase-in study to say, first of all, does this? I haven't answered, asked the question.
I know where you're going.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and Counselor Butler. Because there's a Class C, because of the, the extent of this, a Class C environmental study has to be done, and that includes all these components. To get all these components done, to complete this, to bring us to that, as close as we get to build-ready, we need to complete this as a whole.
Okay.
So is there a Phase 1? Is there a Phase 2? No. A Class C includes all of these several studies that have to be done, so the costs aren't doing that.
Okay, I'll ask you, is it feasible in your mind, do you think this is a good move at this point? Or I guess you wouldn't be studying it, would you?
Through you, Acting Mayor, to Counselor Butler, this is something that I believe has been going on since the days of Pat McCauley, Reggie Avery. This was something that's been looked at several times, and they've been trying to achieve it. There's never been an opportunity coming forward where there might be funding. We now know, as you are pretty well aware, that there was a, we had the Prime Minister here basically speaking about some possible funding in the future, and we just want to have ourselves in a ready position, so we can take advantage of that. And this, again, council was also at one time thinking about some type of project that we could do locally to stimulate the economy. This also falls into that. So we're just doing our part, and certainly council has, because they put the $250,000 aside for us to look at this study, come at budget time, so this gives us the opportunity to move forward.
Thank you. That's okay. Counselor Fada?
Either Larry or, or Susan. The part, one of the things that, that really concerns me is, is the fact that, my understanding is that this has a five-year shelf life, and that's where I'm thinking here, that we may be doing this exercise, and then we may have to go back and do it again. Is that a, really a concern of ours, Susan?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Fada. An EA, I believe it's my understanding, does have a five-year shelf life. That does not mean the study that has been produced is disregarded. There are certain administrative items, basically, that need to be addressed at that point in time, and it's something that is much less in cost and will be a less, much less strenuous exercise at that point in time, if required. But certainly, it is our understanding the funding opportunities would be happening far prior to that five-year period.
Thank you, the CEO.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Fada. I, just for clarity, while we're looking here to do a feasibility study, and we do talk about potential funding being made available for the project through the federal infrastructure funds that were recently announced, this is a necessary review regardless. We have significant state-of-good repair issues that exist within some of the existing facilities, and so we would be needing to look at this and would be using the report information that will come out, whether it's being used in two years, three years, or five years' time, to be addressing that, regardless of the funding being made available. So I didn't want to lose sight of that component to this issue as well.
So the, part of the point of this, and then, again, either Susan or Larry, is, is the notion of being shovel-ready, is this part of what we're trying to do here, is to be shovel-ready for this particular project?
Through Acting Mayor, to Counselor Fada, yes.
If I were to say to you that, and I don't know how the funding will work this fall, but I know that he came, the mayor, the Prime Minister came here and he spoke about Transit, so I, I'm getting the impression that the monies that he's going to be making available have to lean towards some, something to do with, with Transit? Is that correct?
The CEO will respond to your question.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Fada. The announcement was $120 billion infrastructure plan announced Canada-wide. Three of the criteria that have been identified through the Phase 1 discussions included green initiatives, supporting resilient and stronger Canadian economy in terms of their brochures, social infrastructure, investing in Canada's communities like community centers, et cetera, and public transit, and public transit was specifically identified within this program. So it's that avenue that's, was consideration for us. This is a large-scale project, and it, we think would be very eligible under the program as, as identified. We're still waiting, however, for a criteria to be made available so as to be able to make an application. In the interim, we're trying to make sure that we're up to speed and be shovel-ready for when that program starts rolling out.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. So, just so that, my, my opinion on this, again, based on what you just said, is that if we want to make something, more than one project shovel-ready, the one that we've got shovel-ready, which, which I think is something that we know that we have to deal with, is the third, is the second phase of the, of the West End Community Center, which is the, the new rink. Will there be competition between the possibility of getting that application through and this one here through? Will there be comment, where this one might be picked over that one? Is that possible?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Fada, all of the priorities that would be brought forward in any funding applications that would be dealt with, of course, would be coming to council for its consideration review, likely through the, the budget cycles or as programs are made available. So it's not a case of administration making any choices of one over another, there would be a fulsome discussion with council of what priorities are available and what projects are eligible, and then look to council to give direction where they would wish us to place our applications.
Just so I'm clear on this, Mr. Acting Mayor, there's a vote on this afterward then? There's a vote on this, right?
Yes, for the agenda item, yes. No? It's an information?
There's a resolution on the floor.
Yeah, so we, we are going to vote for or against, and my concerns are, as they were last time, is that, is that we were prepared and we were, we were optimistic that, that the funding that we, we received last time was going to be for the West End Community Center, and that didn't come through. I, I'm hoping that this is going to be one that's going to be a possibility this time, and I think this is not a priority, as far as I'm concerned, this is not a priority. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fada. Counselor Kompadich?
Yeah, just one question on the study itself. Will it, with the integration of Transit Operations PWT site, is it going to show any impact on either growth on jobs or a negative impact on jobs that we would have? Would the study also be, would this also be included with the study?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Kompadich, the study will address staffing and areas where potential synergies and/or growth or a negative effect may happen, but ultimately, again, it would be left up to staff to make that determination.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from counselors? Counselor Turco?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. A question was asked, we're going to vote on this or not. Now, we've already accepted, Mr. CEO, we accepted the recommendation about hiring somebody, haven't we?
No.
No. It's a resolution.
Yeah.
We haven't hired the consultant yet?
No. That's what tonight is.
We took the tender, correct? Well, how does that hold us? How does that bind us if we decide to vote against this recommendation?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Turco. We had a RFP, we had a call for proposals, we received those five, and it's at tonight's meeting that we would in fact determine if we are awarding that proposal to Tolic Engineering.
This is not a tender.
Yes, it's not a tender call.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from counselors? Okay, can I call for the vote? All four? Opposed? It's carried? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, that brings us to Section 11 of the agenda, bylaws. I have a motion by...
Vote that, no, 6.8?
No, we, we, we had dealt with item 6.8, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Sorry.
So we're able to proceed to item 11. I have a motion by counselors Romano and Butler, resolve that all bylaws under item 11 of the agenda and the addendum under date 2016-0627 be approved?
All in favor? Carried.
Under agenda item 13, closed session, motion by counselors Romano and Butler, resolve that this council proceed into closed session to discuss an issue under the Companies Creditors Arrangements Act, disposition of land, and corporate organization, and further be it resolved, that should said closed session be adjourned, that council may reconvene in closed session to continue to discuss the same matters without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? Carried.
And a motion by counselors Romano and Butler, resolve that this council now adjourn.
All in favor? Carried.